Okay, minutes.
There's Megan.
I don't want to propose changing it, but one thing I was thinking about, I, I'm secretary for the Green Mountain Transit, and so I've been writing some minutes. And at the end, the last paragraph of section five in the minutes from the last meeting, where it says Chapin-Kaner asked the staff for guidance. I didn't know, for someone reading this, if it would be good to say Chair Kaner or Chair Chapin-Kaner, so that it was clear that I was asking on behalf of the commission. Do you know what I mean? I was doing it as a procedural step.
Right.
Right. So up in the attendees at the very top next to your name, I do have Chair in parentheses.
So I think that's fine. I think it's fine. Hi, Megan.
Shayla's back in the waiting room. She's in again.
Are we doing minutes?
We are on the minutes. Any changes?
Yeah. Alright, sorry, I'm on a split screen and I just have to shrink it down a little bit.
I have the Word document opening on my computer, so I can make grammatical changes.
Okay, are you in the H drive? Because that's what I'm sharing right now.
Are you sharing the PDFs?
Nope, I should be, I should be screen sharing Word at this point, although let me, let me stop for a second and just make sure I've got the right one up, so you guys can see edits.
Megan, you don't have more than one microphone on, do you?
No.
Here we go. Hopefully you'll be able to see me edit now.
That sounded good then. When you first started talking, there was a echo.
Okay. Okay, so are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, so I guess there are several places where Robert is, should be plural, but it's
possessive.
And then this is a little bit more subtle, I guess, but the part where it's talking about what Jeff Nick explained at the bottom of that same paragraph. So it starts with the word Jeff Nick. And then, at the end of that paragraph, there's several sentences. The first ones of those three says, he explained that the allowed uses, you know, are not desirable. And then there are two more sentences, and it makes it, I wondered if we could rephrase it so that it's clear that this is Jeff Nick's perspective, not our summary.
Yep.
So maybe a colon after explained, and, or something like, he explained that from, you know, developer perspective, these three things, right, that they're not desirable, there's abundance of vacant office space, and there's not demand for residential housing.
Yeah, I see, I can just do a semicolon here. Instead of repeating Jeff Nick said allowed uses. I don't know if this is illegal semicolon use or not. But we can clean it up. Or I can make it a bullet list or something. I think I'll just go back to saying Jeff Nick here. Alright, okay.
Are you ready for another?
Go for it.
Comment, okay. Then, in the following paragraph from that, it says, the group discussed the town plan. I guess town plans, possessive, guidance for the industrial areas of town. And then the next thing is not really a sentence. So I think you maybe want, including the challenges of industrial properties of budding or encroaching into residential areas.
Yeah.
And then I just had two little things, a couple more little things. On the second page, the first full paragraph, four lines up from the bottom. It says, there was a concern about losing.
There you go.
And then, and then at the end of the, in the middle of the next sentence, or the, anyway, two sentences from there, some uses industrial lend to design review.
I'll just say some industrial uses lend themselves.
Right, so we're missing the order and we're missing themselves.
I will add a themselves.
Two more really quick things, I think, it's just two. One is, I wondered with, in the end of that paragraph, where we say, along the lettered avenues, can you say avenue, you know, A, B, C, D? Just because if someone was new to Williston or whatever, they might not understand what that meant.
Previous paragraph.
Previous paragraph.
Very last sentence.
Last sentence, there you go. One line down.
Long, yeah, I got it.
Avenues, yeah, A, B, C, D.
Then in the next paragraph, halfway through, it says form base code.
Yeah, it should be a D on the end of that.
And I think that's all the changes I had.
I've got a couple.
Go ahead, G.
So I'd like to go on page two, I'd like to go up to the first full paragraph again. In that sentence in the middle where it says, there was a concern about losing the design review gain from the gateway, I would like to put that sentence up at the beginning. I think that kind of explains the whole paragraph.
Sure.
And then the other thing I had was way back on number two, public comment. I think, I think we should put under that, that there was no public comment, just so it's clear. That's all I have.
I have one in seven. The second paragraph, it says confusing particular the phrase.
Confusing particularly the phrase.
I'm not sure what the last sentences, or two sentences is saying, but I suppose it's okay. It is an aspiration for process in the town plan section about land use rules.
Thought that was a little odd, too.
I think what we, what we were getting,
Yeah.
What we were getting at was, we didn't want to call the form-based code process out and say, well, here we're going to do a really good public process, somehow implying that that's not what, what we always do.
How about it is aspirational?
Yeah. General consensus. Particularly the phrase defaulting to residents' priorities, the general consensus to remove this statement outright or modify and relocate is an aspiration.
I think that comes from, oh, I didn't realize my video stopped here. I think that came from Megan's comment about, just because it's, has a good public process doesn't mean that it's, we're not egalitarian, but what was the word we were using? You know, fair to people of all incomes and backgrounds.
Yeah. Equitable?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, equitable.
Thank you.
Well, I think part of the conversation was also about the mandate for public participation. And, you know, my concern was that that statement about the, that residents are always right.
Right.
Was a little daunting. And so it was a matter of, you know, having good, strong public participation. But, you know, tempered with some expertise from professionals, I guess.
Right, and I think, you know, you're always trying to do a lot of good public involvement, but you're also asking experts about, you know, projections for the future, or, you know, hey, when we, when we put a roundabout somewhere, how does that work? And, you know, you may ask an expert how a roundabout works, and that may be different from how a resident feels about having a roundabout on their road.
Right.
I think we all knew what we meant, it's just tough, it's tough to get it in words.
Okay, so, as I should have done before we made edits, do I have motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Oh, so moved.
So let's say, let's say G moved it and Megan seconded it, okay?
Okay.
Any further comment? I, I see N minus one, so I have to keep switching to make sure nobody is raising their hand. Okay, so, all in favor of approving the minutes? Sorry, I pushed the wrong thing. Give a thumbs up or say yes, okay. Any opposed? Shayla, are you okay?
Yep.
Okay. I'm, I'm having to flip my thing to see everybody, I'm missing one or two until if I do, and so, any other comments on the minutes? They are approved. So those minutes, done with that. Notices, no notices from other jurisdictions? And so, energy plan. And I can't remember, are we reopening the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so at 7:16, the hearing on the energy plan changes, amendments to the town plan, hearing is reopened. And we still don't have public here. But we had some activity in our, in the intervening week. So I'm in favor of going to the things that are highlighted in the agenda, which the first one is the introduction revision on page four. Shall we go through those few things that are highlighted that are, what changed?
Right. Emily, do you want to screen share, or do you want me to bring it up?
I can screen share.
Okay.
If it gets glitchy, let me know. I think sometimes running the VPN and Zoom makes my internet work too hard.
Yeah, same here.
And, and Matt has somehow transformed half corners from the 50s into a much nicer place.
My desktop background.
Well, can you guys see energy plan?
Yes. If, if you could make it be screen width in the view, it would make it easier to read.
Yeah, I'll zoom into the introduction. So these were edits that Megan made, and then G made a couple little additions to the end.
Has everyone had a chance to review these from looking at the hints in the agenda, or should we take a little time on it? Kate, how about you?
On the introduction, I, no, I didn't have any.
Okay, Ron?
I didn't have any, thank God.
G, you already, your comments are in there. Jill? Shayla?
No, they look nice.
Okay, I feel the same. So let's move on. Addition to policy 2.9 on page 24. And the page numbers actually were slightly off because of editing, but if we go to 2.9, there we go. Oh, yes, and this, this is one that we have not seen, because I noticed you put it in, Matt, or you suggested it. So this is a change that we are looking, a suggestion that we are looking at for the first time.
Yeah, I think it was, or Matt, you can go.
Oh, it's okay. You know, we just, we've seen some other places where we talked about trying to achieve things with the town, you know, being, being a leader. The town does participate in CATMA already via my attendance at the employment transportation coordinator meetings. And, you know, in, in light of some of the other strategies that have come into play in the last eight weeks, like telecommuting, we wanted to make sure that the plan was reflecting the town's continued attempts to, to keep up with and be a leader in the rest of the world with what we're doing.
I think it's a wonderful idea, because I feel as though the town should set an example. I, I'm going down the list, Ron, are you okay with that?
We suggest that where it says municipal employees and, the and be replaced with a comma. So it'd be employees, support employer. Well, no. It's, it's not worded right.
Municipal employees, yeah. Private, private sector. And residential property manager, yeah. It's like private sector, municipal employees, private sector and residential property manager.
I think there's two, actually two separate thoughts. One is to develop a policy for municipal employees. The second thought is support employer and residential property manager programs.
I almost wonder if we shouldn't make them two different numbers. Thoughts, Emily or Matt?
I think if we did develop a policy for municipal employees, comma, and support employer and residential property manager programs, another comma, to encourage transit use, et cetera.
Kate, how do you feel about that?
I think that's fine.
Okay, Ron?
I'm trying to understand the structure of, it looks like to encourage these specific things by the municipal employees and private sector employees, encouraging transit use, telecommuting, car pulling, van pulling, da, 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 da. The sentence not, it doesn't make sense.
Right where your cursor is doesn't, shouldn't have a comma. Emily? I can't, yeah.
What if I flipped it and we did support employer and residential property manager programs, comma, and develop a policy for municipal employees to encourage transit use, et cetera?
Okay, I can go with that.
You know what I'm realizing as you're talking, is that what we're doing is encouraging transit use, telecommuting, car pulling, van pulling, that's the thing we're doing. And the way we're doing it is through supporting those programs and developing a policy, and so I almost wonder if we shouldn't lead with that. Just the way we're, working with GO Vermont and other organizations is part of the how.
And I think that's a good suggestion, because a lot of our, our items in this start with the verb. And so if we started with encourage transit use, blah, 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 by developing a policy for municipal employees and supporting employer and residential property manager programs.
Yes.
So encourage transit use, et cetera. By supporting employer and residential property manager programs, and developing a policy for municipal employees, period. And then encourage again, and then work with.
Yeah, it's a little bit redundant to then have another encourage, but I don't, I don't feel we should wordsmith too much, I don't know. Are we okay?
I think, I think I would like to make one little change, and after property manager programs, eliminate the comma there.
Cool.
They're just two things.
Yes, yes. It's not an Oxford comma, because there's only two things.
Right.
Okay.
Well, wait a second, then that two in the middle of all the red there, strikeouts is, should be struck. Okay, now I'm good.
And so I'm not going to go through the list, but if anybody has more to add to this paragraph, or doesn't like the way it stands, wave or holler. Okay. Vert, 5.5 and 5.6 that are on pages, I think it's on page 31 and 32 now. That's right, and this came from G primarily, but the idea was, we were told by the planning commission that we couldn't require some of these things legally, probably. And so then we were saying, well, encouraged, but then we wanted to be stronger if we could, and so, and there are some areas where we can be stronger. So the result was, say, require where possible, incentivize where not, on both of these points, and that's, so that's really what the change is.
Right, I think this is a really great change, because it goes back to Ron's point about propane and Megan's point about gas tax is that frustration that we can't do anything at the local level, but want to have that incentivizing language. If we can require it, the language is in here telling us to do so, to take, take that further step if it becomes available. That's stronger language.
Coincidentally, and Chapin brought this up in the email correspondence, Bennington, the Penning, Bennington town plan was referenced in why a wind farm was, was denied permit by the PUC. So I think this is really, really important, that we take as much control as we possibly can.
I think it was a solar farm, but they were gonna take
I'm sorry, yeah.
They're gonna cut down 10 acres of forest, and the town plan saved them, I think.
Yep.
Holler, because I can't see everybody at once on the right side of my screen quite, just unmute yourself and holler if you want to jump in, okay? We're a small enough group, I think that would work. But not hearing anything more on that, then go to preferred sites on page 38, or I think it's 37 now.
Yeah, so this is, originally we talked about making this a new citing policy. It didn't quite make sense to put that statement on there. There's a disclaimer on all the maps that says they're guidelines for the purposes of general municipal planning. If you're actually considering doing any solar development, you're going to have to research a lot farther. Those maps are just a, a rough starting off point. And so this sentence, encourage renewable energy generation is strongly encouraged on preferred sites before undeveloped areas such as agricultural or forested land. Energy developers and preferred site property owners are encouraged to collaborate together. So before even someone's proposing a, a project, potentially on land that we wouldn't want to see solar on, having this statement in there as someone's reading through, encouraging people to work together. Because we want to see those preferred sites develop first. And then they do have some financial net metering benefits for why they are more attractive to develop first. The infrastructure is already in, they're probably on the correct utility line. And then there's financial incentive for your generation that you produce.
I, I have a picky change on this, if we could, which is collaborate means to work together, so I would drop the word together, or else change collaborate to work.
Work together.
Whichever, to me, it's either is fine, and I know you're, Emily, I agree, I like your point about wanting to emphasize the, the cooperation part. Any thoughts or comments?
Looks good. I like collaborate, but I think work together gets Emily's view down best.
Any other comments? Okay. If you scroll down from here, Emily, is where we sort of had to gut, we had to gut some of our stuff about citing in forest. And I just want to say that I, this was in the email thread with G and Emily and Matt, too, that if you read it, it was connected to our agenda. I just feel like we should get this plan in place, and that there is support for us having, there's support for what we are trying to do here in the other, among the other planners in the county. And so I feel like we should work with the CCRPC and other people to find out how we can do that. I just wanted to say, I'm, we've, we've taken stuff out that we wanted to have in, but in order to conform to recommendations from the PAC and the CCRPC, and I just feel we should go ahead that way, even though I don't agree with the changes or want the changes there. And I, I don't know if the rest of you feel that way, I just wanted to allow time to, to say anything if you want to about this.
I'm kind of on the same page as you are, Chapin, I think that I don't like the changes either, but I think at this point, I'd rather have a approved energy plan than dragging this out and fighting it out with the CCRPC.
Okay, in fact, if that's, if we're sitting there, then going on to the maps.
Well, I have one change here.
Okay, G.
Number one, the town of Williston. Number one, the town of Williston. Maybe put a G in there. That's all I hear.
Um, on the, the maps, I had not reviewed comprehensively the maps, but I did today earlier and think we really, oops, there's Williston again. And I felt as though the final version of the maps is quite, you know, significant improvement from where they used to be, and I'm pretty happy with it. I also noticed for the first time that the land that the, that we were talking about last time down on Route 2 near Industrial Avenue is prime wind. I was surprised.
Are you suggesting we tell somebody to put a wind farm in there?
On the western portion of it, where it's kind of, there's got some hills that are probably hard to do much else with, it might be a good place. It's an industrial zone.
Okay, I'm for it. It's a good entry into Williston, you know, let them know what we're about.
Um.
Where are you talking about?
Emily, if you could pull up the, the wind map. That last one, yes. So, um, if you look at the intersection on the very west there with the intersection of industry, the triangle of Industrial Avenue and Route 2 and Brownell Road, and you'll see pretty much the whole La Berge property is dark purple.
Yeah, awesome.
What's the altitude for that flat path through there? Is there a restriction?
Oh, details, details.
We make them taller so we could snag it.
So I don't, I don't know. It just was interesting to me that that area showed up.
Good spot.
Okay, um, and any other comments before we close the hearing on these energy plan amendments to the town plan? Okay, then if it's okay, I'll close the hearing, the public hearing. And the next question is, are we ready to forward this to the select board? Am I, am I right, Emily and Matt, that that's the next step? And in the transmittal, we were going to include some things about costs. And I can't remember where that landed.
Yeah, we have that sitting in the back burner to include that language in the transmittal. I had some conversations with Eric about the select board. Where they're at, I think. Um, so right now, the energy plan is a future issue on their list, but the select board might have time in June to discuss it as an informational session. And then after the informational session, they would vote to move it to a public hearing if they feel ready for that.
I would make a motion to approve the plan and forward it to the select board for comments.
Okay, Ron moved.
I'll second it for, oh, go ahead.
I'll let Shayla second that one.
But, comments now?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to see the language we had in the cover sheet first. Is, is that possible before we actually move, send it?
Yes, I feel like what the, Ron's motion was to approve what we just reviewed. And the transmittal itself, we need to, we do need to work on that. How do you see that going, Emily?
Um, I think that's something that we can have a rough draft for you for the June 2nd meeting. And if someone wants to help write it, that's an option, too. I know we talked about that in the past where we would help provide some template materials, give you those budgetary numbers. So if someone did want to take a first stab at it, they're pretty simple and mostly boilerplate. And then it's just a little narrative about the process you guys went through, any dissenting opinions and why and how they were handled or wrapped into the plan. But yeah, I think we can have that for you for June 2nd.
If we, and if we alert them that it's coming, I don't know if some of them would like to start looking at the document even before we formally transmit it. Is that, is that typically done? Or should we wait?
We can give them that heads up. If, if the planning commission is able to move something on in early June, we could, we could be at least tentatively scheduled for the informational session with the select board in their second June meeting. And that's usually a quick overview and, you know, they're, they're likely to be in the midst of a couple of other fairly big things with the turnover of the town manager position bearing down on them. But, but we can, we can do that and we can let Eric and Rick know that this document's available for them to start looking at while, you know, while we're getting it in process. But my experience with the select board is generally, you get your 10 minutes in front of the board to, to really kind of explain it to them and they've, they've got a lot on their plate. But we can, we can still, you know, show them where the document is and say, this is, this is coming and it's a big document. And, you know, that transmittal memo is a real opportunity to kind of guide them through the high points while also making sure they're aware of some of the budget implications of what they might be adopting. So I'd like to use that for both and get it to them as soon as we can.
At this point, does our committee own this document? Or does the energy committee worked on it for a year and a half before us own this document? Or is it somewhat of a share?
You, you own it now. I mean, the energy committee essentially was working under the auspices of the planning commission. So this is, you know, this is yours in terms of your saying, you know, we went through this process. We established an energy committee. We took this back in and reviewed it. Now we're moving it on to you, select board. What do you want to do with it?
And I feel pretty tight in a couple of ways. One is that G is on both. The other is that I attended quite a few energy committee meetings and Brian Forrest has attended some of our meetings. And Eric Wells facilitated the energy committee. So I feel as though we have, we probably have not missed something bad in terms of people understanding what was going on.
Brian could be useful in the transmittal memo around the finances. Because I feel like he was the lead, at least when they presented to us around that and seemed like an advocate for it if we needed more information.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Brian and see if he would be willing to help on that component as well.
He has already provided some numbers and I feel as though this memo is from us, not from him. And he's in a better role if he's supporting it than if he's leading it. You know what I mean? It should be our energy plan, which he is the current energy coordinator, has some, I want to give him, not take his power away by having him be the lead on this, if possible. But his information that's in, that he already has written up and we can ask him if there's, we should run it by him for sure. If, Emily, if you provide us sort of a template, if there's one other person, I would be happy to work with them to craft this transmittal memo and then we'll, I'll review it at our next meeting. Does someone want to volunteer?
Time to nominate.
Were you volunteering, Ron?
Oh, no, I was going to nominate G. I think I got some seconds out there, too. Okay.
Will you work on it with me, G?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else that wants to just, we can't have enough people on the discussion by email that we become a meeting. You know, we have a quorum, but three of us could be, there could be as many as three of us discussing it by email to draft it. Um, so I
About how realistic would it be to reduce the, or advance the goal and get to net zero in 2030? Had y'all had that discussion or is that too alien a concept? It starts down a political track, but it's, I wish we could do this faster. I'm assuming if, if technology or events overwhelm us, like viruses sometime do, that we would be able to say, okay, we're going to have to update the plan.
So the introduction talks about that a little bit in that it says what the IPCC or whatever it is came out saying we had to do it faster. And so we need to do our part. So it's, it's there in the spirit in the introduction. I feel as though we need to have this plan in place just to have the preferred processing with the public service board on approvals for renewable energy.
Well, I agree. That's why I dropped a lot of them.
Yeah. So I feel like we should get it in its current state going. And then if we feel collectively that we need to accelerate, that we should then do that as a second step. And I feel as though this already is a pretty big pill to swallow for some of our community who is not thinking about carbon. You know, the fact that we put in this much effort and incentives into renewable generation and saving energy and trying to avoid putting carbon and try to reduce our carbon footprint. It, um, I feel like we're pushing a little bit. And I'd like to make sure people have a chance to digest this before we go another step. That's my personal feeling, Ron.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think some of it was like the, the date selection was how the LEAP model from the state was done and how a lot of those intermediate numbers in the tables were calculated was by CCRPC using their, their modeling.
I think one thing that will happen is we are saying that the one thing that has to happen is to hire an energy coordinator in our recommendations within the plan that we just are looking at. We said there should be a full-time energy coordinator. Do I have that right? I think that's the one budget item that we included as a part of the plan itself. And to me, that energy coordinator would be writing memos and suggesting this or suggesting that and, and proposing things that in a sense, we are getting this started, but we are not responsible for refining it in the, into the future, other than as an overseeing body.
I was spent the weekend, or part of the weekend, reading the state plan because it's all news to me. And I've been doing a lot of legal drafts, so I haven't had time to focus on this. And really appreciate all the work everybody's done. I lost my train of thought again.
So Ron and Shayla, who made a motion and seconded it, are you willing to take a friendly suggestion that that, your motion be amended to say that we accept the, this current draft after our public hearing, we accept the current draft and pending the transmittal letter, pending drafting the transmittal letter that we will then select it, send it to select board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments before we vote that?
I caught my thought. It was the state plan mentioned infrastructure life, life cycle, which meant to me their intent is, and it was basically electricity and gas infrastructure that they were trying to reserve. If I plug in gas, I get to keep it for whatever the perceived life cycle is. And I wanted to be able to amend that down the road. So I'll just through, wanted to throw that out now.
Okay. In favor of the motion? Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have passed that. Thank you so much, Emily and everybody for your work on this. And thank you, G is representing the energy committee. This is not the end of the road, but we've made a huge amount of progress in the last 18 months. Okay, next is reopening the public hearing on public health, which I'll do at 7:49. We have no public, so if we, if we go through Emily's notes, and by the way, Emily, this is so helpful to have these notes about what to look at carefully and what to skim.
Good. I'm glad that's working out well for you guys.
Yes. So, page nine, section 3.1.5, oh no, page nine is just page nine.
It's spinning.
And I think, Megan, were you making some suggestions on this document when we were, I can't remember?
I had been. I tried to read it today, but I couldn't actually find the, um, the edited version, that one with the May date in it. It was not on the website.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to link it in the agenda, guys, but
So I, I wasn't very successful in looking at it today, obviously, but, um, yeah, but, you know. So I don't know if my edits were already incorporated.
Okay, so let's pull it up and look, because, um, I did find it. At least I thought I was looking at the right one. So are we on page nine? There we go. It looked to me like this had the edits in it that you had suggested.
Yeah, this looks good. This was the part that I, I think, you know, we had kind of hashed out together. And this looks like it caught all those issues, both phrasing and referring to the figure so that people understand what they're talking about.
And, and starting with the vision and then talking about the behaviors as a support of that vision.
Right.
Any comments from anyone? Okay. And then page 18 or section 3.1.5? Oh, yes, this was the one that we were just talking about in the minutes, about the inclusive process versus the equitable. Oh yes, this was the one that we were just talking about in the minutes about the inclusive process versus the equitable.
Like they should say draft a form-based code using a participatory and inclusive public process. And then striking the default to residents' priorities, that sticky section.
Emily, do you have, um, sometimes it's easier to read if you do simple markup rather than all the markup? I mean, a lot, yeah, in review. Yeah, click down on that. Yeah. It's like when we're just reading a paragraph, it's kind of nice to have it like this. I understand we would also want to see the changes, but, um, the red lines on the left mean there has been a change.
Yeah, it kind of makes you dizzy with all the hatch crossed out.
Yeah. And it's like, is that a full sentence? Oh yeah, there's a verb.
Uh, so yes.
Supports.
Yes. Right on, Kate. There's an extra space further on that line too, Emily.
Also. Do, do we like that final word, appreciate? It seems like after all of our forceful statements, it's kind of a wimpy word. I wonder if we would want, um, you know, that residents and businesses, uh,
Welcome.
It's because it's more than appreciating. I get what you're saying, Megan. It benefits like the health and well-being.
Right. And I was thinking about the previous language, like maybe something like, that helps residents and businesses thrive.
I like that.
So it's a little more-
I like it.
Punch.
Yeah.
So you would need the word, uh, helps before residents. Or help, rather. Support. Help, yeah.
I'm not sure we need that sentence that says draft a form-based code, or maybe it's in the wrong place or something. It sounds funny. It says the town should consider making greater use of form-based techniques in the growth center as a means of refining the town's current development standards. Draft a form-based code using a participatory and inclusive public process in this way. I don't know. It doesn't sound-
I think maybe it should be rephrased. I agree. That sentence was looking strange to me too.
I would agree with-
Something like the town should draft a form-based-
Something.
Code.
Really, what we're typing is the drafting process. You know, we, the heading says we're considering doing a form-based code. But what we're saying is the drafting process should be inclusive and try to reach equitable goals. Is that?
So let's say that then, like say, um, drafting the form-based code should employ a participatory and inclusive public process.
Or are we good to just make it a command and say, uh, will, W I L L, instead of should? That would show intent.
And, yeah, and it's really aspirational. I think what the last sentence is saying is that in this way, we're saying, we hope that this, or we want this form-based process, form-based result to support equitable public policies while promoting blah, blah, blah. We're saying that's our aspiration.
And my high school English teacher, Mrs. Roach, would ask us to get rid of also in the next sentence while also promoting.
Miss Roach was my calculus teacher.
I knew she had somebody out there.
She got around.
I love that, um, everybody, I think it seems like a requirement to be on this commission is that you are a detail person.
Yeah, you didn't know that, Chapin. And when we go in front of the select board, they always give us a, you know, a paragraph to edit. And if we do that correctly, then we're on the planning commission.
You guys should per-free my staff reports. There's always a typo in those.
So- Kate, I wanted to go back to, is the way that was worked close enough for you?
Uh, yeah, I think it, I think it sounds better.
Anyone else have comments on that paragraph? Is there anything else in this that was still pending? We, I, at the last meeting, I took this first thinking it was gonna be a quickie because we'd been through it before. And we got hung up on these couple of places for good reason. But I don't know. So that's why I don't know whether there's other things we should look at. If there are no other comments, um, shall I close the hearing before I do any other comments? Okay. So close the hearing at, well, let's call it eight o'clock. And I'd entertain a motion to, does this need a transmittal letter as well?
Yes. And we can probably, correct me if I'm wrong, just wrap the two together in the transmittal letter.
Yeah, the, the first piece will be a very basic cover memo that simply says the planning commission held hearings on these items on the following dates and now transmits them to you. You know, with a, with a recommendation that you set a public hearing to review them, you know, just sets out the procedural stage for them. The, the next part of that memo will be all of this stuff about the implications of the energy plan specifically and, and some of those things. So we can, we can keep it in, in a package for now.
Okay.
And, and just describe that this is something else they're getting.
I think that's actually helpful. And, and they may want to hold the hearings at the same time too. And some people may want to attend both hearings. And so there may be some benefit. And one of the interesting things to me is as I reread this, these changes for health, you know, in public health, it, it felt very much in line with what the CRG folks were saying to us. Okay, then I'd entertain a motion to adopt this and send to the select board pending drafting of the transmittal letter.
So moved.
Moved by G?
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion?
Shayla just messaged me on page 20. There's a typo. It says tau instead of town.
They may want to just search the document for tau because there shouldn't be many toes. Oh, except it shows town. You have to put a space after it. Actually, it, it spell checked you into town.
Yeah, when I type in T O W space, it doesn't pop up. Um, but what we'll probably do is have, um,
I'm wondering if Shayla was looking at an earlier version because we did find one last time we were looking at this.
That's possible.
Okay.
I did miss last meeting, so.
We'll give this another read through the office. We'll have fresh eyes with Melinda and Bonnie, take a look at it and make grammatical changes. Assuming those are acceptable because they're just correcting typos.
Any, um, other discussion?
Can I just ask to, uh, I would like to, I'd really like to be able to see the, read the final version. Can you send this to me, Emily, or can we put it, um, somewhere more prominently? I was only able to find previous versions on the website.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll email this or document directly to everyone right now.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I was just real excited that this was proposed because it really brings meat to the plant. It makes what's an abstract thought, it gives it a real physical presence, especially living on the sidewalks like we are these days. I, I think it's important that this came, came, came about when it did.
Great. Okay. Um, all those in favor? Say aye or give a thumbs up or? Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have passed that. Great. Yes, those are two biggies, especially the energy plan. Um, a local leaders toolkit, that was today. Did you guys attend? Emily?
Emily did. I did not.
Yeah.
How was it?
It was interesting. Um, it, they will be posting a recording of it. Um, the recording is up on Facebook Live or on their Facebook page. Um, and I can forward the toolkit. They're launching their little, um, their little ebooklet on the topic. Some of the takeaways for local government, was the analogy, um, and I don't know if they use this analogy, but it, what it reminded me of is like when you get on an airplane and they, they always tell you, put your face mask on first before you help the person next to you. And local governments need to focus on keeping themselves working, keeping themselves going. Other towns are having requests like to give loans and give money to, um, businesses in their community. And we don't know how long this is gonna be. Is this gonna be months? Is this gonna be years? Is there gonna be another great recession or great depression recession? We don't know. So the town's focus should be getting out of the way to let businesses be creative, let entrepreneurs be creative. Allow flexibility for home businesses, allow flexibility with parking. So our work we're doing with, um, eliminating parking minimums, that sort of thing is, is right on track. And that the town keeping itself financially stable and healthy as best as possible so that it can provide the functions it needs to, to support the community and support resiliency. And then working with, um, other groups. I think we've seen that Vermont's response has been pretty good with different organizations and churches and groups getting together to make sure people have the support that they need, that they're getting food, they're getting shelter, um, that type of thing. Um, and then our work in terms of, um, allowing businesses and to have, um, flexibility and entrepreneur space. It was reminiscent of our conversation we had with Jeff Nick about Gateway West where we allow, um, higher density residential and some office space, but that area hasn't seen the transformation. So, um, often that's indicating a lack of, um, low entry point for makers and entrepreneurs. I forget the town, but there was a case study where the town had a lot of vacant space and they just said, hey, you can come rent this for really cheap. Try out your business idea for a month or two where you're not trying to overcome the hurdles of commercial leasing and commercial space and try out your idea. Um, and they had a lot of vacancy in their downtown area. And these maker spaces and entrepreneurs then got the momentum they needed to take that bigger state step to a more permanent space and move from that pop-up to something permanent. Yeah, so I'll send around the toolkit. It was really interesting and I think very inspiring that Vermont and Williston is on the right track and also has places we can further refine.
Emily, a question. Did they talk about, uh, I know Fall Strong Towns, um, updates. And I know there's been, they've been quite vocal about advocating for additional recreational space, like even taking a lane of a road, um, to, to accommodate more, you know, walking and, and running and cycling and stuff like that, that, and if any of you have been out to the sort of, uh, the, the loop, we call it in our family. The, right through the village, uh, you know, along Mountain View and, um, North Williston Road. There are tons and tons of people out all the time. And it's actually, I've seen a couple of instances on North Williston Road in particular where, um, there's sort of like bunching of people and they're, they're, you know, they're really trying to be distant, but they're also running out of space and going into like the bike lane, which, which sort of, sort of exists there. And I wondered if they, uh, in the webinar or whatever it was that you went to, um, if they talked at all about that, those possibilities.
Um, it was inferences. I'm looking at my screenshots that I took. I've been watching these webinars on my phone so I can do screenshots instantaneously.
I've been taking pictures with my phone of the screen on the computer sometimes when I'm doing a webinar.
Yeah, so they broke it up into, um, your immediate short-term response, your midterm and your long-term. And in the long-term, it talks about, um, focus on leveraging public spaces, focus on people. It was more municipality, um, internal government oriented, um, but a lot of that was implied. Some of the things they did talk about is local stimulus is often given back in, um, transportation funding for transportation projects. And encouraging communities to focus on, on maintenance and improvements of existing as opposed to building new. And even starting out with little pop-ups, like use traffic cones and straw bales to do that temporary pop-up of what would it be like if this street got narrower and you had more bike lanes or you had more sidewalks? So encouraging communities to using, he used the analogy of, of gardening versus hunting. You're not going out there and catching the, the big game, um, like the big business and, and reeling it in. You want a garden. You want 50 businesses to each be able to allow one employee. And you're not making one giant improvement in this one spot, that big, your big game catch. But you're doing all these little things all over. So these little improvements to where we're seeing those disjointed, connections in our path where we're seeing a lot of use, where there needs to be, um, more space for people to walk around or, or be outside, um, communing with nature. Yeah, it was, it was interesting. Um, and in some ways like a, a little, like a little firm on communities because we, we want to be compassionate and, and help people. But sometimes we're not gonna go back to the, the normal that was before. Things are gonna evolve. I'm pulling up my screenshot again.
We had a young lady pointing or painting chalk flowers on the roadway in the hamlet. And I'm always playing traffic cop and monitoring the traffic coming out of the apartments around. And the two flowers that she's drawn take up maybe 50% of the roadway. But people are slowing down, dodging the artwork and just really kind of, and people have come out of their houses and it's just one little subtle change. And I think we could do a lot more of that and make sure.
Yeah, I guess that was kind of related to my question because, uh, Emily, the things that you mentioned, um, upfront were very business oriented. And I would, I would love to hear what Williston is, you know, I imagine the select board has its agenda as always, but, um, you know, is there any movement in the town to, you know, to do some of these morally public space and- to, you know, to do some of these morally public space and recreational kinds of experiments? And, you know, is somebody going to pay for the chalk, right? So?
And in the past, Matt has proposed things like having a food truck at the town band concerts and some of those ideas. And now in the COVID era, those exact suggestions are not perhaps going to happen this year. But thinking creatively about how to create community, I like that thought.
Yeah, there's a lot of, you know, bigger cities that have really started to look at opening up street space to allow for social distancing. And, you know, as you have denser and denser places, you, you really need to reallocate some space. And it happens to be the time when there's not a lot of demand, you know, to drive vehicles. It's, it's been slower here. So we have seen Burlington do a little bit of that. I don't know if anybody's been down Pine Street recently. That's one of their streets that they've removed a lane of parking along Pine Street and coned out a a bidirectional bike lane to try to accommodate that exist, that additional demand. But, you know, much, Megan, like what you're observing here in my neighborhood, you know, I live on a three-quarter mile long dead-end street that is, is generally very highly vehicle trafficked. And it has become the go-to street in my little neighborhood for kids on bikes because it gets you to the backyard of South Burlington Middle School and High School to the fields there. And you know, a little bit of intervention, like a soft horse at the end of the street that people would have to drive around that would say, hey, this is, this is a, this is a busy multimodal street now. Just, just drive the speed limit for heaven's sake would go a long way. And I haven't seen a lot of examples of like Williston or South Burlington sized places really jumping on that. I think a lot of municipalities like ours are so small that it's like every week I do a department head meeting and we're all just kind of hanging on by the skin of our teeth, trying to figure out, you know, what to do. And, you know, that said, there's, there is this huge opportunity to, to think about that. You know, another thing for Williston is like, we don't manage almost any street parking that's municipally owned street parking. So you really kind of have to get almost to Burlington before you've got a Vermont city or, you know, probably Montpelier, where you can start thinking about doing some of those things. But the idea of like slowing down neighborhood streets, of course, for our Public Works Director, sticking something in the right of way on the pavement is like the last thing he wants. You know, engineers get very, very touchy about the idea of dropping a soft horse into a street without, you know, doing a study first. And, you know, because of the liability they, they encumber themselves with. I, I can kind of understand it and, you know, you'll, you'll hear a lot, the deeper you go down the Strong Towns rabbit hole, you'll hear a lot about how clear zones and engineering principles have led to, you know, really high-speed streets that are really terrible to walk and bike on. And end up actually not being that safe for vehicles either because they've been designed with a very specific set of physics in mind that actually encourages a lot of speeding. So.
Yeah, Megan, to your original point, number five, provide people space is one of the immediate actions, which kind of goes hand in hand with support adaptation. So businesses, what we're seeing is a need for configuring their parking lots and areas for some sort of drive-up situation, curbside pickup. As restaurants can open up and now that it's summertime, people are going to want to be eating outside more. So they might be hardly any or no seating inside, but they want to convert a couple of parking spaces to additional seating areas. So allowing in your regulations that flexibility to try things on a temporary basis.
That's, that was one thing that I wanted to bring up was the, the outdoor eating in Williston is a little bit trickier than it is maybe in some other places. But it's something that I do think would be an important thing to support for both community and, and health.
Yeah, I mean, you know, from a zoning administration perspective, if, if a business owner came to me right now and said, hey, could I corden off a couple of parking spots at my business to allow for some outdoor seating? I don't have a lot in, in our bylaw to go on. And in fact, while I, while I used to have a fairly broad-based special event permitting regime that you could, you could almost do anything under, we've discovered it's recently that it's so obsolete that we're not really using it anymore. That said, in the interest of being flexible, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing all kinds of things that I'm, that I'm not enforcing on right now and, and nobody's asking me to. But if this starts to be a more durable situation, the, the quickest route may actually be to, to propose a very lightweight ordinance to the select board that allows for temporary reallocation of, of especially parking, because that's what everybody has so much of. And then you just list off the purposes, outdoor dining, pick up and drop off tents, car hop service, everything that we're seeing people do already anyway. And just saying that, you know, we're, we're, we're just going to, we're just going to sort of legitimize that. I like doing it better under an ordinance because it's easier to go back and repeal that rather than issue somebody a zoning permit for something like that, which then
Right.
kind of goes forever, even if you change the bylaws again. I know from communicating with our neighbors in South Burlington with the planner and zoning administrator, they're, they're facing very much the same requests from some of their businesses. And, and they have sort of come up with a list of here's all the ways we think we can be flexible without totally ignoring our zoning. And it's very similar to everything I just said.
Yeah, and then preparing for recovery, things like waiving home occupation restrictions. I would say Williston has a fairly lenient home business policy. I think Vermont with its agricultural roots and allowing for accessory dwelling units as kind of baked into the Vermont culture. But then thinking about things about legalizing housing adaptations. And there was a lot of talk in the webinar about middle housing. So the, between a single-family home on a standalone lot and then your hundred-unit-plus apartment building, there's a lack of that middle ground of duplexes, triplexes, multi-units that look like a single-family home, even accessory apartments. And giving people affordable housing options. So you don't have to have a lot of people crammed into apartment. Some of the things I was cleaning from the webinar are geared towards much larger cities that have more pressing essential services disparities, like thinking, think about food deserts or where you have very large, vast suburbs for an extensive area. I think Vermont and Williston particularly, even if you're fairly far out, you're not that far from some of these little places. Like your grocery stores and your pharmacies. And a lot of the residential development in the residential zoning district has the path to help connect.
I, I don't want to, at the risk of saying something that everybody already knows, I have lately watched quite a few webinars and Zoom things that were recorded because I couldn't make them at the right time. And I love the fact that you can change the speed. If you go to settings, you can listen or watch at one and a half, one and three quarters speed and then slow it down when you want to. But in particular, this, I feel like I can digest much more when I'm not going at the pace of the original presentation, especially if it's one that I already familiar with. So I would like if we could discuss this more next time, Emily, after we've had a chance to look at that presentation.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Can we put it, could we put it on the agenda? Okay.
And I just, I sent you an email with the Word document for health and I included that toolkit for you guys to look at in more detail.
Great. We have on June 2nd, bylaw parking. And we're also going to be going over the transmittal letter for the two things. On June 16th, we overlap with the select board, I think. And that's where we're wanting them to take this up, take up our amendments to town plan. And I'd like, you know, in the old days, we would have walked over there. I do want to make a present somehow, if they're, if they are not having people in person, then on Zoom, I would like us to be able to join them. And so could we budget that into our June 16th meeting to basically coordinate when it's on their agenda versus our agenda?
Yeah, we can ask Eric to try to schedule it maybe for closer to the eight o'clock hour and, and get through our parking, which is going to be a tweak to the last draft you saw. Try to get through that fairly efficiently. Sure.
Yeah, with Zoom, we just leave this meeting, go to the other one and pop right back. So I think we can be efficient with time and be in pretty much two places at once.
Okay. Another thing that's been sort of on the back burner is wanting to talk about density and wanting maybe staff to present some things about density and quality of life. To have a general discussion. Is that still, people feel still like that would be helpful? I also, by the way, read some of the Conservation Commission minutes and they've been looking at open space in the residential district, just like what CRG was talking about for, for their own reasons. And looking at preserving some of the open spaces that are there already so that it isn't all developed.
Right. And that's, that's, maybe I'll send a link for you folks to look at where they're going with that. You know, this is an update to the prioritization of the Environmental Reserve Fund. You know, that will also lead into some work on, well, how much of this that we think is high priority? Do we want to preserve? How long do we think we have to try and preserve it? And what's it going to cost if we want, if we want to do it that fast? You know, really try to put a dollar amount on it. So that, you know, there's some understanding that, yeah, you know, you can, you can throw $30,000 or $40,000 a year into the Environmental Reserve Fund. And that's, that's going to buy what it's going to buy. It may not be everything on your wish list. And, you know, that's been the experience, I think, in Williston for many, many years. And it's an important piece of that question of development and the ultimate sort of build-out of the town. And, you know, what's going to be preserved, what's going to be developed, understanding that you know, most pieces of land, especially in the residential zoning district are going to eventually reach one of those two states. You know, barring major changes in the town plan and zoning, that's just, that's just what happens. A hayfield in an area that's served by municipal sewer and water is not likely to stay a hayfield forever all by itself. And so I think that's a, that's a worthwhile project for the planning commission to, to pop in and, and take a look at. So we'll send that around. You know, we tend to, we tend to live in the land use regulation side of things for the most part, but this is another thing the town can do to implement its plan is, is to proactively protect land as, as it has a very good history of having done. Not to downplay what the town has done so far, but there is, there's more out there. And probably a bigger budget item if you really want to do it.
So I think we can adjourn early tonight. But before we do, are there any final comments or things people want to share?
Have you all heard the news? The second outbreak has started in China?
No.
They've locked down 100 million people. They think it's coming from Russian immigrants or their citizens returning from Russia. So it's just FYI.
Why is the town, why is the fire department flags at half mast? Today?
I do not know.
I don't know either.
I didn't hear anything about any, you know, town staff or anything like that. It may have been, or maybe some sort of international day of remembrance. I don't know. Next week is Public Works Week. That was the only holiday I was aware of.
I think I saw a thing on, maybe it was the Williston Police Department Facebook?
Don't do Facebook.
Well, we're, while Emily's looking for that, I'll just put in a plug for the belated Greenup Day. I just saw the announcement on the planning Facebook page. Sorry, Ron, but you can, you can, I'm sure sign up in some other way than just Facebook.
You can go right to our website.
There you go. So.
There's plenty out there.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Emily, did you see why the?
Um, so not quite, it said today, the Williston Department and State Police find a way to recognize healthcare professionals and workers. And there's a picture of, of all the vehicles forming a heart.
I'm sure that's it.
It might be associated with that, but that feels kind of morbid because I thought you did flags at half mast to celebrate or to remember death and not, thanks guys for working really hard. I don't know, it might be, we can ask.
And I wanted to ask, is Bonnie going to the office every day?
No, none of us are going every day. Most of us are going a couple of days a week right now.
I haven't been there like a month. I have a stack of things that need to go back to the office, but I'm doing most things remotely.
Are you guys coping well?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've got the modified procedures now for when you do come to work. So, you know, we, we call, we have a safety officer comes out, meets us, asks us the questions, you know, are, are you feeling okay? Are you caring for anybody who's sick, et cetera, et cetera? Takes our temperature and then lets us, lets us go to, into the buildings at that point. And then Public Works has really stepped up with more frequent cleaning and sanitization of all the high-contact surfaces. We're still close to the public. We've been doing a lot of work ramping up our ability to serve people who needed to come in and do file research and things like that. And a lot of work just negotiating permit filings over the website or rather over email and all of that. So, you know, we're, we're keeping the lights on and the paper moving. It's definitely a, a different effort than it was in the past. And the plan townwide of being really fully capable of having office staff all back in is sort of being talked about as a late June kind of thing right now. Planning department work from home, at least partially, has been, has been working really well. We've been able to take advantage of it to some extent, so.
I've had some nice email exchanges with Eric about different plans and I really, I just want to give him a shout out that whatever you all have been doing has, has been great. And the effort he's made to find masks for the public and that stuff is really, it's going to make the difference. And again, it's, it's sort of what we were talking about in the town plan where, you know, if the town can demonstrate how this can be done, you know, well for local businesses, I think that that's a huge plus and, and is the town's role. So I just, I appreciate that. And I, I do think so far it's been thoughtful about it. Pain in the butt right now. I have a health department employee, I'm on your commission.
Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn? Megan moves. Jill seconds. We are adjourned at 8:32. Thank you all so much. And Kate, I'm going to look for the CP setting on my And Kate, I'm going to look for the sepia setting on my Zoom because that's really nice.
She's got good lighting.
Is it lighting?
No, yeah, it's just, it's just the lighting in the room.
Oh.
It looks very nice. In my basement, so there's no natural light.
The rest of us are in blue because our screens are lighting us up. And so it's, I thought you had a sepia setting.
That's funny, no.
All right, take care, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody, thank you.